Good evening. Welcome to the November 21st, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, I would request that everyone silence all electronic devices and please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Conditional use permit request will be heard tonight, and once the commission makes a recommendation, the applications will be scheduled to be introduced at the Monday, December 17th, 2018 county council meeting. Public comment will be taken tonight and at the council meeting on Monday, December 17th, 2018. Public comment on conditional use permit applications will not be taken at any meeting of the county council held thereafter. Applications for preliminary plaits heard during tonight's meeting will also be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during the meeting. The vote on preliminary plaits is final. Only a recommendation for denial of a preliminary plat would be heard before the county council. The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for this evening's public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those documents are the Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, and the Year 2025 Master Plan for St. Charles County, which includes the Year 2025 Future Land Use Plan map. I see that we have a quorum. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
I make a motion.
Second. All who are in favor, sign aye. Tonight's agenda, we have two conditional use permits and two preliminary plaits. How our meetings work, I will read into the record the request. We will hear from staff. Commissioners can ask questions of staff at that time. We will receive the staff's recommendation. Then we'll have the applicant come forward and present their application. And again, the commission can ask questions of the applicant. Then we will open the public hearing. Anyone here tonight can come and speak regarding the application. And then we will have the applicant come back to address any concerns as part of the public hearing. Then we will close the public hearing and then bring the matter back to the commission for deliberation and a vote. So the first item on the agenda is Conditional Use Permit Request, 245 Terry Road, CUP 18-15. Owner: Sunflower Hill LLC. Applicant: Michael Kahneman. Property zoning: A agricultural district with floodway fringe overlay district. Use requested: A restaurant. The 2025 Land Use Plan recommends agricultural tourism uses. The parcel is 17.39 acres. Location is on the southwest corner of the intersection of Terry Court and Terry Road, located in Council District 2. Staff.
Okay, on this application, you noted that it was zoned agricultural. If you see there's a conditional use permit, you may remember that you approved and county council approved in 2017. That was for an event center. The event center was to be used for wedding receptions and weddings. The farm operates under the permissive uses. They do sell produce and other items from the farm. When this event center was developed, they also put in a commercial kitchen, and what they would like to do at this time is make more efficient use of the commercial kitchen and open a small cafe. Staff has already reviewed their site plan for the CUP from 2017. Everything is in place. They do have adequate parking. They do have, they've met the requirements for the entryway from the road. They met the highway department's requirements. So they have brought everything into conformance, and they have been operating under that CUP. Staff did look at all of these issues, and with that, we are recommending approval with the condition that they update the site plan. And basically, that's just showing the extra use and adding the notation, which I will also update you on, the conditions. There shall be no more than 99 guests. This is based on building code and how they got their permit for the event center. The restaurant café shall not be open to customers prior to 7:00 a.m. and shall close no later than 5:00 p.m. And our requirement that no conditional use shall be active until all conditions of the approval have been met. There have been no letters.
I have a question. So, as you mentioned, we approved the use last year. So does this additional CUP, does it negate the prior one, or does this kind of piggyback on that in addition to?
This would be a piggyback onto that. They will continue with their current CUP, and they will also add the CUP.
And then add this additional one to it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, hearing done. The applicant? Okay, I need to swear you in with it all at one time. Please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name individually and address for the record, please.
Okay. Michael Kahneman, 245 Terry Road.
Dylan Lewis, 335 St. Patrick Lane.
And Karen Kahneman, 245 Terry Road.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Okay, I kind of laid it out nicely. What we did is, part of the barn when we put together the event center, we had an area carted off to sell our produce, which we are selling produce there, but it's sort of become a community kind of gathering, and our commercial kitchen's right next door. And so, we wanted to like, kind of open like a coffee shop for coffee in the morning, serve a few breakfast items, and then for lunch and afternoon, maybe serve some things from our farm, kind of in the community. So it's sort of more of a cafe than like a full-fledged restaurant. We envisioned four tables of four inside and maybe a couple of tables outside.
Questions? Will you be serving alcohol at all?
Yes, we do have liquor licenses. I hope we're not serving liquor for breakfast.
I won't say anything. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone here will now open the public hearing. Anyone here to speak regarding CUP 18-15? Please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Teresa Waddington, 4521 Kildere Drive, Augusta, Missouri.
Okay, go ahead.
I believe that Sunflower Hill Farm is an incredible addition, and the cafe and anything that they do is a compliment to their business. And the CUP is a compliment to their business.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else speak regarding CUP 18-15? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing.
I just, I know the property there because we've visited friends for over 20 years coming up to Cherry Road and what they've done. The improvements are fantastic. I really think you've got a goldmine because nobody, there isn't any place to have breakfast in that part of the county, none. So I think you'll have a very successful business, and I concur with staff. I think it's going to be a good addition for St. Charles County.
Any other questions in the commission?
I just, I think it seems like a natural evolution under the original CUP, and I think it makes a lot of sense.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Third.
With the same conditions as outlined by staff.
Yeah. Mr. Fromm made the motion. Mr. In here, second. Mr. Griffin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Clary?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is Conditional Use Permit Request, 1042 South Point Prairie Road. This is application CUP 18-16. Owner is Greystone Holdings LLC. Applicant is Maple Leaf Holdings LLC. Property zoning is C2 General Commercial District. Use requested is RV and boat storage. The 2025 Land Use Plan recommends future commercial use. Parcel size is 9.90 acres. The location is on the east side of South Point Prairie Road between I-70 and Interstate Drive, adjacent to the city of Wentzville. This is located in Council District 2. Staff.
All right, on this application, first of all, I do believe, I'll let the applicant speak to this, but I do believe that they're reducing the amount of acreage that would be included in this conditional use permit. It won't affect anything on this, on this application for tonight. But basically, this, this application is for 1042 South Point Prairie, which I'm showing you a larger map right here. The staff member that wrote the report basically wanted to point out that this area is currently zoned agricultural to the west. This is Zone C2. The rest of it is in the city of Wentzville, and this is also Zone Commercial. To the west, you see the agricultural zoning, but we are envisioning, and the city of Wentzville is envisioning that this will eventually develop as South Point Prairie Road is straightened and this becomes David Hokel Parkway. This area in between there will also develop commercially next to the South Service Road. The applicant is proposing to, to do a storage lot. The layout, they are asking for gravel parking. That will be up to the director to review at the time the site plan does come in. There are homes located, let me go back to this map. There are homes located to the south of this property. This development will be on the northern portion of the property up here. The homes to the south are protected under a previous conditional use permit with the tree line. It's approximately 20 feet wide and goes all along the southern portion of the property and along most of the eastern portion of the property. With that, staff is recommending approval of this application for a conditional use permit for a storage, outdoor storage facility. They will be required to perform a site plan, along with the condition that all recreational vehicles and boat trailers stored outdoors must remain currently licensed and in road-ready condition. Any existing trees within the 20 feet of a street right of way and within the 20 feet of the west property line shall remain in place except to meet site distance requirements for the driveway. As a precondition for site plan approval, any county ordinance violations must be abated, and any outstanding county permits must be obtained before the county may issue site plan approval, and no conditional use shall be active until all conditions of the approval have been met. Staff have received three letters. The first is a comment letter from the city of Wentzville. The second is opposition, and the third is a letter regarding the parking lot and storage lot from the applicant.
Any questions for staff?
I was reading all this. I assume you talked to the city of Wentzville. How is this, with their future development, how is that going to impact this?
The, the city's letter basically was a recommendation. They wanted, for instance, you know, the concrete entrance to the property from the highway. That is up to our highway department and the city of Wentzville, and we will meet those requirements as required by the departments. They also did recommend pavement of the entire site. Again, that, that's a recommendation. They would like, they did add a recommendation on landscaping. We do have to follow the ordinances of the county on landscaping. We can ask for additional landscaping if we feel it's necessary. They did ask, inquire about public sewer service. If the applicant does require that, the city may require annexation. And they asked about lighting. Again, we will meet the, the county ordinance requirements for lighting. We won't allow any off-site light to shine, for instance, on the highway or anything. And they asked about the existing tree line on the south portion of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? How will this impact the, the current study in the, of the roadway at South Point Prairie?
Well, we don't anticipate it. Right now, the anticipation, this yellow or orange looking, this is the, the plans currently. They're, they're planning on extending this road all the way through, and then the David, the South Point Prairie will become David Parkle Park, David Hokel Parkway, excuse me, from the bridge area all the way up to the South Service Road. This area right here, we're not anticipating any right-of-way requirements or any improvements.
Any questions of staff? Seeing none, we'll ask the applicant to come forward.
I have a PowerPoint in there, but I don't know how I'm going to move it. Oh. Hmm?
We're going to bring it up.
There it is. Okay.
No.
Sorry.
You solemnly swear affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Brad Goss, 120 South Central, Suite 700, St. Louis, Missouri 63105.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for giving us the opportunity to present this Conditional Use Permit Application for Maple Leaf Holdings. The staff has given you a brief overview of the property. I have no way to advance this PowerPoint. Do I need to just tell them, go to the next page? I'm good with that, too. How about the next page? I should have something. Let it work out. Perfect. All right. So what I've, what I'm showing you on this slide is an aerial of the site. You can see Point Prairie Road is on the west, and then what Interstate Drive is on the south. I've outlined in yellow the part of the property that actually is going to be subject to this conditional use permit, and that's about 6.27 acres. The overall site is 9.77 acres, but that three and a half acre parcel in the southwest is not included in this application. The client, Maple Leaf Holdings, is just buying the 6.27 acres. And we've given those, the boundary survey and the legal descriptions to the staff, and they've accepted those. So this will only apply to the 6.27 acres. So I'm giving you a close-up of the site, again, outlined in yellow. You can see the existing site is currently being used for various kinds of storage. There are various conditional use permits that have been issued by the county over the years for this site for material storage. There is also a telecommunications tower that's in the northeast corner of the site, and then there are these five buildings that are being used for various kinds of storage. You can see in the north, those five buildings, the white buildings, those are also storage facilities. There is a storage, commercial storage business there onsite, so this is very compatible with what is adjacent to our property. And then you can also see on the northwest corner of the site, we have an existing drive that goes into the site. That driveway will be replaced, and we are going to use our cross-access easement that is shared with the property owner to the north. And so that's how the access will be provided. So we will meet the county requirements in terms of access under Point Prairie Road. Again, this is just the boundary survey, giving you the outline of the site and obviously legal description associated with that. The boundary improvement survey that we have performed shows you the different structures on the site and shows they comply with any kinds of setback regulations applicable to the site. Again, there are five existing buildings that are being used currently on the site. The current zoning is a C2 zoning. I've circled in yellow in the middle of the page, the property that's zoned C2. You can see that we have C2 immediately north of us, and then there's, again, the existing storage facility that's in the city of Wentzville. To the south of us is the Glenhurst subdivision. We went and met with the Glenhurst subdivision homeowners association last week. We were fortunate they were having one of their quarterly meetings. So we went and we presented, you know, the proposal to them, so they were able to ask us any questions and raise any concerns that they would have. And really, the only concern that they, they had was really the tree buffer on the south that we are keeping in place. And with that said, they were, you know, very happy, and they didn't have any other concerns as far as what would be taking place on the site. They've been living with the storage facilities already and recognized that RV and boat storage is actually a use they'd need out there, because their existing covenants and conditions, for example, don't allow RV and boat storage inside their subdivision. So this is kind of a need when you have the subdivisions in the area. Our existing conditional use permits on the site, there were three conditional use permits that have been issued, dwelling, one for dwelling and warehouse, completely enclosed, one for firewood, cutting, sales, and storage of automobile, truck, trailer, and RV sales and storage, and boat storage. That recently expired on April 28th, 2018, which is why we are here renewing, in essence, that conditional use permit for the RV and boat storage, and also providing the concept plan so you know exactly where that's going to take place on the site as required by your ordinance. There's also many storage and boat sales conditional use permit that is in place for the site, and that allows the storage that's taking place in the various buildings on the site. There is a telecom tower, as I mentioned, that's authorized by ordinance 17-01. And then this permitted uses in the C2 include general contracting services relating to building, electrical, heating and cooling, painting and plumbing, and on the site. So those are uses that are also taking, that are also allowed to take place on the site and that will be relevant. And then our current application, which is for an RV and boat storage. Our concept plan that is enclosed in the package you have shows the access. You can see the drive at the very upper left-hand corner, that's the northwest corner of the site, that's leading to the cross-access entrance. There's a gate at our entrance, and then our site is surrounded by a six-foot-high fence that'll be a black vinyl-coated chain-link fence. The fence along South Point Prairie Road will be that kind of wrought iron type of fence, so we'll have a nicer level finish to it, is, and facing Point Prairie Road. Then we have in the south, the detention and water quality area that is required by county ordinances. You can see our concept plan that's laid out for various parking spaces. We obviously have set them out for different depths, depending on the type of vehicle, from 20 to 40 feet in depth. And then we have drive aisles that are required by county ordinances for the vehicles that will be stored onsite. Landscape plan that is required by the county has been provided as part of our submission. We are required to have plant three trees on the site and 12 bushes, which we have provided for in our plan. Four of them can, eight of them have to be deciduous, which, which we've provided in terms of bushes, and then we provide the trees that the county staff has requested. So we do meet the landscaping requirements of the ordinance for this proposal. That is the existing tree line on the south on Interstate Drive. I just took a picture of it so you get an idea of what's there, and that tree line will remain in place. And we have shown on our plan that that tree line remains, and that it's not going to be disturbed. So with that said, I'm happy to answer your questions that the commission may have.
This is totally just storage, no sales?
Correct.
Did the residents have any concern about the gravel versus backup?
No, they really didn't. And, you know, I did talk to Robert, who was the Myers who prepared the plan. Yeah, and I, when we talked about, I said, you know, I was at, you know, the most recent storage facility permit that was issued at this commission, happened to be that, that night. It's a gravel lot. We'll provide dust suppression if necessary, just as has been provided by other storage lots. With this kind of storage facility, you know, you've got very expensive vehicles. Boats are expensive. People don't go peeling around in there. They drive really small, really slow, so you just don't get that kind of dust kicking up, but we'll comply with the requirements.
Brad, one of the other things that the city of Wentzville brought up was the signage plan. Are you going to do a monument sign, or are you doing a sign on a, on a pole, or what's, what's the plan for the signage?
We haven't done a detail on the sign. We won't, I doubt we'll do a monument sign. I think it'll be a sign on a pole. I don't think it'll be that elaborate. But we do want a nice-looking entrance. So that is why we're putting the wrought iron fencing in on the front.
Well, you're planning on doing a, a pole sign instead of a monument?
As far as, you know, as far as I know, Mike, we haven't really, you know, sat down and looked at that in detail. We'll, we'll work with staff on that.
Just looking to see, trying to be good neighbors since you are surrounded with Wentzville.
Right. As to their question of Santeri Sewer, we don't need it. Otherwise, we would have to annex into the city of Wentzville.
Is there going to be, do you have a lighting plan yet, and is it going to comply with what they've asked for as far as the completely shielded downlights?
Yeah, it absolutely would be downlight, shielded. That's also a county requirement. We will have security lighting that we'll lay out as part of the plan and working with staff.
Okay.
What's the intended use of the existing buildings?
Storage, as they're currently used.
Is there, is there somebody living on the residence right now?
In the dwelling, there's somebody living there, and he'll continue to live there, but there's also, in the other buildings, there is a business that does, they store materials for foundation repair. And there's another business that stores materials in connection with construction for land disturbance.
And those are owned by somebody else, or?
Yeah, they're under lease.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Now we'll open the public hearing for CUP 18-16. Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding this application? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Comments, questions, concerns?
I would make a motion to approve with the conditions that staff has presented.
Second. Mr. Griffin made the motion. Mr. McDonald made the second. Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Clary?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Next on the agenda is preliminary plat, P R E 18-17. The owner developer is Dominic and Emily Lictic? Did I get that right? Close enough? Okay. And Ryan and Rachel Blasi. The property surveyors, Jane's surveying. Current zoning is agricultural, parcel size of 16.9 acres, number of lots, two. Location is on the southwest corner of the intersection of Eisenbach Road and Noel Lane, Council District One. Staff.
All right. On this application for a new preliminary plat, the applicant, I believe, I think it's this, this western portion of this split, this is, this is the parcel, two parcels that are asking for the preliminary plat. The applicant, one of the applicants did apply for a building permit. This is how it came to our attention. But basically, we've had these happen before. You probably have seen this happen where we have too many splits. Our splits on properties are limited from the time that the Unified Development Ordinance went into effect, which was in August of 1999. We do track those splits. This consequently amounted to one too many splits, less than 10 acres. Consequently, a preliminary plat was required. Staff has reviewed the plat. We found no problems with it. There is a vegetated buffer on the southern portion of the plat that will be required to be protected. We anticipate, though, that the homes will be built closer to Noel Lane. The only problems that we did run into is we are waiting, I don't know if it's been resolved yet or not, but we are requiring that they have membership in Noel Lane Association. It is, it isn't a subdivision, but it is a private lane maintenance association. So that is the only requirement that we will have additionally on this plat. And I believe they have it, it's just a matter of, of doing the paperwork on it. Highway Department did require that they have no access from Eisenbach Road. The school district will not come down Noel Lane, they will pick up on Eisenbach. And other than that, we had no other comments. Fire Energy has no comments on it. There is no sewer, there is no water service. They will have to have individual wells and septic systems. However, with the large size of the lots, we anticipate no problems with that. With that, staff is recommending approval of this plat.
How far off are they for the turnaround to have a school bus or is there any possibility?
I believe the cul-de-sac at the end of the, these cul-de-sacs that you see at the end of Noel Lane and Old Oak Lane, well, there isn't one at Old Oak Lane, but I don't believe that they're large enough for the school bus to come down. So they're, they will not, the school bus will not come down and turn around and come back.
The turnaround or the?
The turn.
The turnaround itself?
The turnaround itself is not.
How much are they lacking in feet to make the turn?
We did not review this portion of it. As you can see, it's not a complete cul-de-sac, only about half of it is paved. So I would imagine quite a bit of this still has to be paved. I can measure real quick on this. The right-of-way looks large enough at 108 feet. Typically, we require, the school district, I believe, and the fire district likes to be around 60 feet.
Any other questions of staff?
On a subdivided lot like, like this, is there any specific utility requirements? I mean, I'm thinking in terms of well and septic. I mean, do they, are they, I know that, in other words, I'm just thinking if they would subdivide it further, would there be some sort of requirements on the septic type of systems and, and how that would work with the slot?
If they were to subdivide it further, I would anticipate that they may have to rezone at that time. We would also probably be looking at an interior cul-de-sac or street and then we would be looking at utility easements and such on boundary lines. As it is now, the Noel Lane Association, I assume, has their ingress and egress and their utility use outlined in their membership.
And did you, maybe I misunderstood you, but did you say there's a community well or no community?
No, there is no.
Okay.
Yeah, they would have to have individual wells.
Okay, community road. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Have a come forward. You solemnly swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your names and address for the record.
I'm John Dyer, 3670 Dyer Road, O'Fallon, Missouri.
Dominic Lictie, 2063 Hanley Road, Darton Prairie, Missouri 633.
Go ahead.
Got a little bit bigger map for everybody.
Thank you.
Want to put that up on the overhead if you can?
Do what now?
You can put that on the overhead, too.
Okay.
Come up on the screen.
That's, it's a.
So what we got here is 16.9 acres and as she had said earlier, I'd actually came down here, I represented the buyer and the seller in this transaction over a year ago and I think we had just missed the cut by like a month and a half with, with, on the, on the splits. So Mr. Lictie had, has purchased the six-acre tract in which he's looking to, to build his house. And Mr. Blasi is, he is the owner of the 10.9 acre tract. So what, basically, what we, I didn't know in what was with the, how many times it's been split, three times, I think, was Mr. Lictie had contacted me and said that he wasn't able to obtain a permit. And I said, well, let's check into this and see what the problem was. So that's kind of where we're at. As far as on the road, both parties are, it's $200 per year. Is that right?
Correct.
Is what they've been paying for road access for, I'm sure it goes to maintenance.
Yeah, and so that, there, as far as an agreement or anything like that that we've signed, there's, it's more of a handshake type of thing on this private lane. Because I have never signed anything, I've paid my dues since I've owned it as of last summer. So I'm not sure, talking to LA, what the next step would be as far as getting approval from, from the association.
Yeah, on the deed, it does have, we, we are granted, I think it's 50-foot access on, on Noel Road to be able to use it, but there is no, I don't think there is any type of association where they're required to pay. It's more or less good standing to get along with the neighbors, you know.
Any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you.
See, nobody in the room to speak on the public.
We can forego the public hearing.
Like to make a motion to approve, P R E 18-17.
Mr. Fromm makes. Mr. Griffin, second. Mr. McBride, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes, Mr. Clary.
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Build the house.
He's tired of living with his in-laws.
I'm sure they loved him.
You know, that's a matter of public records.
Before Thanksgiving, anyway.
Yeah, really, they're going to come and celebrate. You get the back.
He's moving out.
Next on the agenda is preliminary plat, P R E 18-18. Owner developer Kurt A. Misgate and Catherine A. Misgate, a property surveyors, Landmark Surveying Company. Current zoning is R1E, single-family residential district, parcel size 1.08 acres, number of lots combining into two lots. Location, the north side of Summerview Drive, approximately 560 feet west of Kickshaw Drive, located in Council District Seven. Staff.
All right. On this application, the owner at 3943 purchased this, I think it's approximately 1.6 acres if I remember correctly. They purchased this from the owner of the property, the lot back here. This is Hickory Dale subdivision in the rear. The subdivision that this applicant is in is Summerfield Plat Number Two. This again came to our attention. The applicant applied for a building permit to build an accessory structure and we had to inform him that it would have to be a re-subdivision plat. This covers both Hickory Dale and Summerfield plat by doing this. When you're, it's not to, ordinarily, you would think it would be a boundary adjustment plat that would not have to come to the Commission, but in this case, since they were splitting off and creating a new lot in Hickory Dale, it, it does require that it be a re-subdivision plat. Staff has no objection. We did advise that they would have to meet building code and then Highway Department did require that no new driveway be added to access the additional portion of the parcel back there. The applicant is aware of that. So with that, staff was recommending approval of this plat.
Make a motion for approval.
I do have a question. So on, I assume then that Hickory Dale must, the, the lots, the size of the lots must be approved. I mean, I don't know if this would be our concern or not, but would this create a situation now where that particular lot no longer complies with that subdivision hence impacts it in some way?
No. Basically, as you can see, it's all zoned R1E, which is 7,000 square feet or greater.
Okay.
So it would not affect that.
So it wouldn't negate it? Okay, very good.
Hickory Dale was one of those plats that was created either right before zoning in 1959 or right after. So it's, it doesn't really mean all of the current.
Right, okay. So it's kind of how, however they decide to develop it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Klinghammer, you want to renew your motion?
Yes.
I second it.
There's a second, Mr. Clary. Mr. Leonard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
I vote yes, Mr. Clary.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, now I've lost my agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
We have no tabled items. We'll have to do this in two parts. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the September 19th, 2018 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
And now the chair will entertain a motion to approve the October 17th, 2018 regular meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Other business, planning and zoning division update.
All right. If you can see, if you can switch back to my computer, we do have the master plan envisioned 2025 on the county's website under the Community Development Department. Staff will be sending an update to the Commission members and the council members, giving you the links directly to the master plan to review. The next meeting is, of the master plan steering committee is November 29th, so we will not know until after that date whether this will be on your agenda for next month. We do have, currently have two applications and a preliminary plat on the agenda for next month and we anticipate adding the master plan, but again, we have to wait for the steering committee to approve that it's ready. I think that is all that I have. As an update, the Benny Road development will be going for vote this month, November 26th, I believe. That's the only updates I have.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Before you adjourn. Everybody in the room, have a happy Thanksgiving.
I second it.
Anything else to be brought before the Commission? entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Happy 13th day.